We're all charged up tonight, watch out.
Good evening, everybody. Let's call this meeting to order and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start things off with public audience. Is there anybody who would like to speak tonight? Okay, in that case, we will move on.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, not at all, please go ahead. Yeah, go up there.
So, Joe, just sign yourself in, announce your name, your address, rank, serial number, and Social Security.
My name is Joe Shimon. I live at nine Anya Drive.
Begin?
Yeah, please.
Gavel or anything?
No, I can't do gavel.
So, thank you all for your stewardship of the town. I'm a big fan of Simsbury. I love this town, and the more I learn about it, the more I love it more. So, it's something that grows each day. It's very important to me. As a resident of the town, I'm also a business owner, and within our company, five other employees live in town, so they're residents of Simsbury, even furthering its importance. And the first time I saw Simsbury, the very first time I came here, was as a visitor to a wedding, actually, a wedding reception at the Simsbury 1820 House 16 years ago. And I remembered coming here with my new wife at the time, and we said, "Boy, wouldn't it be great if we could live in a town like this someday?" Pretty neat, came as visitors. So, I'm here tonight to just say a few quick words representing the Simsbury Chamber of Commerce. I'm on the Board of Directors, and I'm also on the Executive Committee for the Chamber. That's one of the groups I'm involved in in town. And I want to ask that we resume funding the Visitor Center for the 2018 and 2019 budget year. So, we appreciate the partnership that the town has had with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is a very proud and successful group, mainly because of the town we're in, Simsbury. We respect your commitment to the Chamber and all that we've done together, and your participation in our Chamber events adds a lot of validity to them, and we appreciate that and understand and respect that. And at the same time, the Chamber is, kind of at the core, wants to have a successful business environment, a vibrant business environment, and a lot of that comes from visitors, people coming here, spending money, seeing us, getting to meet our boutique, unique businesses. So, having a Visitor Center would be an amazing thing, especially as it's described as a big, beautiful, you know, brick-and-glass building filled with welcoming people. We have a Visitor Center, and it's a different, it's a little different than that, and I've heard different words used to describe it. And I, we all know what it is, right? I've been there. I'm subterranean every month for a meeting, so, you know, we know where, we know where the Board lives right now. But attracting visitors is very important to Simsbury, and economic development is very important to the Chamber of Commerce and the town residents and tourism. As we grow this, we all win. Lisa's letter, which you saw, kind of chronicled some of the brochure mailing and pamphlet distribution and that sort of thing, but to me, the extensive service that the Visitor Center provides is something that fits what it is, right? It's the phone line. So, if you Google Simsbury Visitor Center, the first two hits are the 860 number to call, 658-4000. And often, when you call that number during the week, someone answers it. They do. So, we've committed to answering it for 25 hours a week, but Lisa's always there, and she's a very dedicated person, as many of you can attest who have met her, so that phone gets answered 40-plus hours a week. When it rings, somebody is there to answer that, and they're calling to find out about moving to town, visiting town, or planning an event in town, three very important things to economic development in our town, and that's why it's important to the Chamber. It's important to the Chamber because it's a budget line item for us. I heard some comment around, you know, the Chamber solvency, the Chamber solvent, but it is part of our budget, and so when we don't get that planned-on item in the budget, we worked so hard with Chili Fest and got ahead, and then now we're a little bit behind, but that's behind us right now. So, let's just look forward. So, I think more important than just a phone line, look who's answering that phone, right? It's not some intern or a young person who's like, "Well, I like Simsbury because it's pretty." It's not that. We've got Lisa Gray, who knows so much about this town, and her husband knows everything about the town, all of it, both sides, and she's, and she wins when the town wins as the Executive Director of the Chamber. Who else answers it? Lori, who is an amazing entrepreneur, still creating new business for town, and I know you've heard of some of the other things that have been discussed with her and wagon rides and the Fleming Farm Partnership, just amazing. So, you have the best people, the most inspirational, the biggest fans of Simsbury, they're answering that line. So, for 5,000 a year, I realize it's, it's a lot of money, but to have that dedicated kind of team duo there of kind of real subject matter experts, I think you're getting a tremendous value. That's all I have to say.
Thanks so much for coming.
Thanks, Joe.
Appreciate it. So, moving on to our agenda item on the budget, Sean, I was hoping you could pull up the snapshot of basically where we landed after our last meeting. What I just wanted to do is recap basically the size of the proposed budget, where we left it at the end of Monday's meeting.
That's right. Should be. Oh, I have to email. I'm just persistent. I wrote all that down, but we forgot to write that down.
So, Sean, if I'm looking at this, just to make sure I'm understanding, with the addition of the social worker position, is the increase 3.89%? Am I reading that right?
No.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, there we go.
With changes.
Yeah. Oh, gotcha. Okay.
And so, with the changes includes the sum of all of these additions and 825 less reductions here for net change of 94.54.
Okay.
That is added to the budget as proposed for the total operating.
Okay. So, I wanted to level set with this view and then have some conversation about where we want to get to tonight before we get into the details of how to get there. So, Sean, you'd also done some analysis, looking at the impact on homeowners, both this budget with the 4.36% increase, as well as the impact if we were to be able to get to the 1.75. Would you mind showing those views?
So, I have them here. Hand out one. See if that might be. Two. Seven. You know. There's copies up here, too. All right, so I'll start with, this is a similar, sorry, it's a little harder to see that. It was a PowerPoint, but can everyone see that okay?
Yeah.
Or at least a couple of friends. So, this is a slightly modified version of what we had at our last, last meeting. What we've added here, you have the bands, just a quick recap, the bands there in the first column are market rate, praise, value bands based on, these are values from the old grand list. If you found yourself in this old range and, let's take, say, the median range here of 250,000 to 305,000, you have 1,800 homes, 1,869 homes there, represents 27% of the total single-family homes, and the median increase for that band was 8.9%, and with the budget as proposed, that would be a 3.3% net tax impact. And we've added here some dollar ranges, this is where it gets, you're assuming that same impact is uniform across that band, but has a rough range, $190 to $273 impact annually. Again, these are single-family homes, but the second page you have is kind of a response, I think Sean mentioned last time, you add in the condos, and there are a number of condos, you get a total of 8,131 dwellings. Do you need another?
He's checking your math.
Sure, that's fine.
They're holding their breath.
The adding machine.
That was a different finance director.
We're in pretty good shape.
Never saw my college math.
Sure. So, you know, the interesting impact here is just, most of the impact, the median impacts within the bands stay the same. Interestingly, there were a number of condos in and around the 160, that first range, $167,000 or less, that actually ended up pulling that median value down. Eight percent was the median increase when you just do single-family homes. You include the condos there, you get to 5%, which ultimately, if we have a 5.4%, sorry, 5.6% tax, mill rate decrease, they actually would be roughly flat, if not down a little bit from the tax impact. So, you see sort of a, a little bit of a bell curve, if you will. Clearly, the bulk of the impact is across the median bands, slightly flat to reduce first couple of bands, and again, as we talked about last time, lower on the upper end. And then finally, the third page you have before you, we have added, first of all, just bolded the median bracket there, but also added what would be the tax impact if we dropped all the way to 1.75%. And so, ultimately, the impact is a 0.6% tax decrease, and so, all this is simply doing is taking that proposed or prior tax impact and reducing 0.6%, and then giving you the dollar range for what that would mean as compared to the other dollar range, and then ultimately, the average of those two pieces of the range. Just try to get a ballpark, obviously, there's a lot of, you know, exceptions to each of these rules within bands, but you see a range of anywhere from $27 a year to upper end of around $100 to $122 plus a year. This is kind of a quick recap and overview of that. Happy to answer any questions. Just trying to get a little additional context to both.
Does anyone have any questions? So, I thought this is really helpful in framing the next part of the conversation, which is around where do we want to get to tonight in terms of, do we, do we want to show the Board of Finance a budget that is 1.75? Do we want to get somewhere between 1.75 and the budget Maria proposed, or are we comfortable going to the Board of Finance with something along these lines, but being able to, you know, explain our rationale and the impact on the taxpayers and, you know, basically defend, defend this budget? So, I just wanted to have that conversation in terms of where are we headed tonight?
Sean, do you have the numbers with the 2.5 million adjustment in there? Is that a...
The percent?
Giving us credit for last year's, the contingency.
So, the 2.5 million is right, right here. The 7.18% is, if I move over to the right, see here?
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, this is technically the adopted budget that we're in right now. If you take out the 2.5 million, that becomes sort of the new base, if you will.
Right.
And from that, this is the value of 1.75. This is how far you would be from 1.75 based on those assumptions. But, right, as of proposed right now, this 4.36, if that were to be adopted and sent out, and you'll recall when we sent out budget mailers or whatnot, it shows last year and this year in the new percent, last year that was 15.5%, I think. That will say minus 7.18%, just year-over-year.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was going to be clear when we actually put this out there.
Sean, could you go back to the, just, sorry, just...
Yeah. Over here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The amount needed, okay.
So, before I get into the analysis that we asked Maria to put together on potential service reductions, I just wanted to have some conversation about where you all are right now in your heads as far as where you want to get to tonight. Chris?
Yeah, I have, I have my thoughts, Eric. So, if you look at the budget that Maria submitted, and then you add and subtract the grains, which are in essence, de facto, adjustments that need to be made one way or another, that's a 3.92% budget. That's before any discussion of adding things. I, you know, on a personal level, I don't, I'm looking at what's the zone of credibility with the Board of Finance, so I'm looking at this and saying that we're not going to get to 1.75 from my perspective, but I'm looking at what is the zone of credibility with the Board of Finance relative to their 1.75% request. So, for me, the approach might be, you take the 3.92, I like the idea of basically saying to the Board of Finance, the cash-to-operational budget bucket, which is 1.1%, we really think should just be pulled to the side and we should get credit for, independent of the 1.75. That takes us, if you, if you look at that, that's taking us down to a 2 point, you know, roughly 8.2. I personally, independent of that, would like to be somewhere at 2 and 1/4 increase to 2.75% increase. Kind of the zone I was looking at was about 2.5. So, basically, what I'm looking at is, you know, 2.5 plus 1.15, which is a 3.65. And I feel it's, I feel that's a good faith effort to deal seriously with a 1.75, also recognizing the limitations we have in terms of the impact of going too far. I think it's legitimate to ask that they basically credit the 1.15. I have a hard time moving up from what Maria submitted to us. I just think it becomes a harder and harder story to tell and justify, given the request for 1.75. And then, to me, the explanation and the justification of being higher than the 1.75 is what we just looked at. We're looking at an impact that's, in essence, there is no impact on the mill rate and almost no impact, you know, on the actual taxes people pay. So, you know, a combination of in good faith, moving towards the 1.75, at the same time that the impact of where we have a gap is different. Maria clearly has demonstrated a serious effort to look at how we could reduce to the 1.75. There wasn't anything in there that appealed to me. The only one that I would even be willing to discuss, and I'm not sure it's a good idea, is the Waste Disposal Days. What that means is we're going to have to probably find about $50,000 to $60,000 in some other areas, so I don't know. We have $60,000 in there for Economic Development Study. I don't know if we, you know, if you take half of that and have $30,000 available, you find $10,000 here, you find $5,000 there, you get to that. I do support putting the $5,000 in for the, for the Visitor Center. So, that's, that's my general thinking.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Anybody else?
Eric, so Sean, can you go back to the, what, the grand list grew by? Please? Just the overall grand list growth?
These slides or the...
Just in general, so the grand list grew by...
The general grand list numbers?
Grand list grew by what, 5% between reavow and natural growth?
About 6.3%. So, you pull up like the mill rate worksheet, and you have all the grand list comparisons?
6.4. The grand list grew 6.4.
Thank you. So, 6.4. So, the Board of Finance loves to hold the Board of Education accountable based on enrollment, et cetera, and they've used different numbers in the past. They've used grand list growth, they've used Social Security slash COLA increases, they use, they use their numbers of the month depending on the story they want to tell. So, to me, if we have a 6.5%, we'll call it for round numbers, grand list growth, there's a couple of reasons for that, right? There's, there's our properties going up in value, and we've also got development. Our job is to make sure that we're maintaining services in this town, right? And I've heard a narrative for a couple of years now, and we've looked at the senior center study, we've looked at different planning documents, our population is growing. And in years past, when the population of the education system grows, the budget grows in line with that, right, Kristen? For your days on the Board of Ed, when enrollment goes up 4%, maybe not 4% on the budget, but somewhere along the lines, et cetera, and as that enrollment went up, the budget went with it, and as that enrollment's come down, the budget has lagged a bit, but it has, it has chased that enrollment. I think we have a similar challenge on our side. We've added police officers, we've added plow drivers, we've added building officials, we've added engineers, because the needs of our town have increased. So, don't disagree with where you're coming from to get to that 3.6 number if you look at operating and other expenditures, but again, I don't feel like anything that we have on the list is candidly adding to services. I think we're keeping up with our population growth and keeping up with our town's needs. Our town is changing as we, as we lose major employers and as houses turn over, as we build different types of dwellings in this community. I think it's enhanced our community because we're having new folks come in, new business opportunities, new ways for people to contribute. But much like we're seeing with the ambulance, where that's, you know, potentially taking up 80,000, we have an obligation to continue to provide services at what we deem to be an acceptable level, right? So, much like my monologue the other day about we fund plow drivers, we fund police officers, we fund building officials, I feel pretty strongly, in fact, I feel very strongly about keeping up in the Social Services Department. So, on the one hand, I agree with you on the 3.6, on the other hand, I feel like we can make a compelling argument because we're still well under grand list growth, we're still under the population growth from a spending standpoint. This Board has been lean and mean for a long time, and we've pinched a lot of pennies and made a lot of hard decisions. We cut $5,000 from the Chamber last year, we cut, I mean, you know, we're down to $5,000 nuggets, and I think we've been very responsible. So, to me, I think we need to recommend the budget that we think funds the level of services that this, this town expects and that we're comfortable with, and if that's 4.39 or 3.6 or whatever it is, the number doesn't matter to me. If the Board of Finance wants to arbitrarily knock us back, and we come back and we line up the cuts and we talk about that, but from a basic level of providing services, I think Maria's budget, in combination with what we talked about at the budget hearing, to me, feels like we are offering those services, and I don't characterize the social service position as an increase. While it may be from an FTE standpoint, just because you increase FTEs doesn't mean you're actually increasing services, you know? I mean, just because you add a police officer doesn't mean you're providing a better police department. You're keeping pace with your calls, you're keeping pace with your residents. We're funding the ambulance for $80,000, we're not providing a better ambulance service. We're keeping up with the needs of our residents who need that ambulance. So, I view the social service position the same way. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Again, I don't disagree with what you said, but it's just a different vantage point.
Yeah.
I would say I agree with Sean on that one, and I couldn't have said it better myself, but I, you know, we have had a lot of different justifications for how the Board of Ed budget moves, and they are the big number in the room, and I understand the Board of Finance's desire to give us both the same number, but it is not, it's not the same, and we have different reasons for moving that number. And as Sean said, just like if we, the Board of Ed came in and said, you know, "We're going to have another 1,500 kids next year," I am sure the people of this town would understand that they were going to have, spend more money. But when we have 1,500 more residents, you know, they would understand that we are going to have greater needs and have to provide more services. We heard from every department about the increase in services and how our residents use those services every day, every hour, every... And I would be willing to go to the Board of Finance with that and say, you know, "This is what we need. This is, this is not a, this is not a bonus, this is not a luxury in social services. These are people who are in crisis, these are people who are having significant issues, and we have asked 2.5 people to take on, you know, the issues of 25,000 people, and we need to do something about it."
Thanks, Cheryl.
That's mine.
Yeah, I, again, I think we need to present something. The Board of Finance has a fantastic job, it's not, it's not nothing that, I view it as probably one of the most difficult positions that, that we, we call upon our citizens to fill, and when, when you, I think when you, when you spend some time, we're lucky to have some members of the Board of Finance who've been in other seats in this body and in other bodies, and our position here is to hear the concerns of the everyday realities of the people in our town. I'm coming to learn that, and that color that gets added into the dialogue helps me better understand the little mechanisms and levers in, of our work in government, and I think that may be somewhat what's missing sometimes when you work in, when you're working in the environment that they are in, because they may not have the luxury of to hear the audience and hear the interactions of the different individuals that we come to, come to interact every day with. So, it was unique when, Kristen, you know, you ask, it's pretty rare, I think, Chris, you can recognize this from business, it's pretty rare when somebody says, "I've got all the money I need, I just don't have the people to execute it." It's a very unique situation to be in, and it's also very concerning as well. So, when I hear that, I take, I take that expert's knowledge and experience to heart, and I understand that that person recognized and has made an assessment, we are lacking a certain part of our community, we are underserving a certain part of our community. So, I think, Sean, I, I agree with you in the sense that we can't be asked to present the same number by the Board of Finance or the Board of Education. There has to be a little more, I would hope, from their side than ours, because we have such, such a small amount to work with.
Yeah.
To deliver what our people need.
Yeah. Proportions are different.
Yeah. Mike?
I've gone back and forth, but I think the initial budget that Maria presented is a realistic, fair budget. I think adding in the additional position for the social services is more than appropriate at this time, especially in light of what I personally believe is coming down the pike at us, at the town, for our citizens who are more at risk now than they have been in the past, and I would really be disappointed, and I think we would let our citizens down if we don't plan on having the ability to, to address that. I do think with the growth in our grand list, with the money we set aside in cash last year, we're really looking at a nominal increase, and I don't think it's unrealistic, and I am supportive, supportive of that, including the additional money for the Visitor Center, which I would fully expect after we do our economic development review, that we're going to come up with something different that we want, and I'd fully expect that, but I am supportive of it, and I think some very good points have been made by everybody.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Mike. Chris, did you have any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think the 4.36 can very easily be justified, so I don't dispute that. I also am confident that the Board of Finance is not going to hold us to the 1.75, so I think, I think they'll recognize the distinction. So, my position is, isn't, is based really upon what I think is the ideal, most credible budget to go back to the Board of Finance with, and so, my thinking on the social services position is clearly, there's a need. I think it's inevitable we'll fulfill that need, but that was not actually presented in Maria's budget as an immediate priority of significant that it had to be filled this year. So, I kind of buy into on balance, where we're adding money to the budget for the Ambulance Association, where we're trying to take care of moving some things from cash back into operational, and we balance out at about the 3.89 coming, you know, and again, pull the 1.15 out, to me, is a more judicious, incredible position with the Board of Finance than, than increasing. So, I kind of looked at it as we will probably deal... So, I kind of looked at it as we will probably deal with it, you know, next year, but don't have to deal with it this year. And so, that's the position I'm comfortable with right now.
I'm going to echo what I said on Monday night, is that I haven't disagreed with anything that I've heard here. I think that what would make me feel most comfortable, you know, in terms of the budget we would present to the Board of Finance, would be if we, if it could be, you know, similar on par with the spending levels of the budget that Maria proposed. So, in theory, if we wanted to add a social worker at about 85,000, would we find another $85,000 so that it comes out more even? That's my inclination, but I think we need to fund services to the extent that we feel our residents need. And I feel comfortable going into the Board of Finance presentation and being able to tell that story. So, that's a long way of saying that I'm comfortable either way. With, yeah, were you going to ask something, Cheryl?
No, I was just contemplating what was going to get us $85,000 out of what's been presented.
Yeah, so that's probably a good lead-in to asking Maria to just recap the analysis that we had asked her to do.
So, at the Budget Workshop on Saturday, you had asked us to focus on service reduction scenarios. When approaching this analysis, I thought that it was important to be equitable to all of our services and all of our constituent groups by trying to ensure that each and every department would somehow be represented in the various scenarios that we were analyzing and running. So, particularly for our smaller departments, where they may only have, you know, two or three people, and most of those costs are staffing-related, to try and do something such as a 5% cut across the board is rather arbitrary, and the smaller departments are disproportionately affected by that. A lot of our smaller departments are currently in buildings that are open to the public. So, that was one approach, in taking a look at this analysis, was could we modify our operating schedules for our buildings that are open to the public? So, we ran a few different scenarios for Town Hall, the Senior Center, and the library. We ran a scenario that would be summer hours essentially. So, for the library and, excuse me, Town Hall and the Senior Center, we wouldn't be open to the public on Fridays from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And then for the library, they currently do have summer hours, but we looked at extending those summer hours from Memorial Day to Labor Day. We also took an approach of what if we had to essentially do no Fridays year-round and no Sundays year-round at the library? So, those scenarios that you see were the cost savings that we were able to do. Due to the time crunch, there are a few missing pieces to that analysis. One, particularly for year one, if we were to implement those changes, we would have to do some additional analysis around unemployment, because folks who were having a reduction in hours would be eligible for unemployment for those reduction in hours. So, this is sort of a starting point on savings. Also, there were some, you know, points we wanted to highlight, such as, I would certainly argue that determining our building's operating schedules are a management right, we would most certainly have an obligation to bargain with our unions over that impact. So, again, for year one, if we were to move in that direction, there would just be some timing and logistical challenges associated with that. We also looked at all of the service improvements that were made over the last three fiscal years. So, again, I know when I presented my budget to you, I had said that we were really trying to focus on maintaining our current services. So, again, looking at our current services, we did have a number of service improvements or enhancements that were made over the last three fiscal years. So, we went back and we analyzed what those service improvements were, the dollar value associated with that. But then we also provided for you the impact if we were to eliminate any of those services. We did our best again to sort of quantify that and, again, provide that information for you if we were to eliminate any of those services. Our other category, so we had, our Culture Parks and Recreation Department didn't quite fit into either of those categories, in part because a large part of their operation is funded out of the special revenue fund. So, again, if we were going to be looking to really reduce the general fund contribution, we were primarily looking at services that are funded by the general fund. And in looking at that, you know, one, for example, could be to accept a lower level of maintenance of our athletic fields and greenways, particularly during the growing season. And then we took an expanded view of that in terms of maintenance at our various parks' facilities during the snowy months or the winter months. And then lastly, we did have one service that we're currently providing. It is purely discretionary. It's our household hazardous waste collection. That is a service, again, that we think adds a lot of value to the community. However, again, it is purely discretionary and it is close to $30,000. So, we had included information for you in regards to that service as well.
Thank you. I would just say that, as I was reading through this, there's nothing in here, in my opinion, that isn't going to, that our constituents aren't going to directly feel. So, I think that speaks to the, I think the level of service that we provide today and the fact that we are not running a bloated ship. We're running a tight ship, and, you know, you lose one truck driver and it's going to have an impact that people are going to feel.
Cheryl?
Along those lines, and that is what I was thinking, is these are all things, while they are all very reasonable and certainly within the realm of possibility, they are all painful. I would consider the economic development $60,000 before any of these to get us to that number. And that goes a long way to that. I would be willing to maybe take a piece of some of the others. I don't agree with putting the library on summer hours early, because school doesn't end until three-quarters of the way through June, and students use that every day of the week, and, or testing seminar, I mean, there's all sorts of things. So, I don't think that's a service that we can start on Memorial Day, only because our school year goes so much longer. Whether or not we could do that after school gets out, we could look at that, but I don't think starting at Memorial Day is reasonable. As for hazardous waste, I could be convinced one way or the other, only because there are other towns around us that do it also, and maybe we can come back to that, but...
Yeah, I, from a closure standpoint, I find that frustrating. I went to the DMV the other day on Monday. I haven't been to the DMV in years, right? But I can remember, you never go to the DMV on Monday, but I guess it's been such a long time since I've been, I went. And I grabbed that door handle and I was like, I was like, you gotta be kidding me. It's like an SNL skit. It's like the last, this is like, it always is the most inefficient place. So, to me, I, when it comes to disclosing something outright on a day, I have trouble with that. I don't mind if we consider reduced hours during, I don't know if that's even a possibility, reduced working hours during the day, but I would want the, I would want our constituents to, any day that they're accustomed to a facility being open, at least being open for some portion of that day. So, we're not, we don't get hammered for that. And it'd be, it'd be an issue of education, obviously, one that I wasn't getting, but one that we'll have to... And speaking of the economic development, I know that Jerry's here. Help me out, we have the study, and I believe the request in the study for Protection Rec for the Irrigation System. Is that in there?
That is in CNR.
That's a CNR item. That doesn't give us very much.
The economic development study is the same place, it doesn't move the needle.
That doesn't really move the needle.
Okay. So, I was thinking that's certainly something that could be moved a year, certainly.
Well, my feeling on the economic development study was that we are going to work on reconstituting the Economic Development Commission. We have a lot of tasks we need to do that we don't necessarily need the study for right away, but we can push that out. That's because we do have economic development projects we're going to do anyway, that aren't going to...
The study's in CNR.
It is?
Yeah. It doesn't move the needle, it's not an operating.
Sorry, my mistake. I thought it was...
We can not spend the 60, but it doesn't change that number.
My mistake, I thought it was in the, I should have opened the big book.
No, it's okay, it's, I'm the only one that memorizes the CNR. I mean, I agree with everything that's said. The beauty of this jab, Chris, is that no matter what we do, everybody's mad at us, but it's probably still the right thing. It's a matter of priorities, right? If some or all of us feel that social services is a priority, then we need to fund it. And then the question is, do we go to the Board of Finance and make the case? And what do we do if we lose the case? Do we continue, is that our priority? Or do we talk about trimming the tree budget? Do we talk about not doing a sidewalk? You know, where are our priorities, right? And to me, we wouldn't blink if we needed another police officer. So, I guess, as I, as, from my standpoint, I'm not willing to blink because we need another social services individual. I don't think we got it in the original budget request, because I, fear was the wrong word, but there was apprehension for any adds to staff. Since I've been on this board, for anybody to come to us with that, they usually come out of the discussions where you can tell somebody needs another staff, and when we ask six questions, it finally, yes, I need another individual. You know, we've had that in different ways. We had to basically beg the chief a couple of years ago to ask for two. He needed two, but he didn't want to ask us for two, because he was worried about his overall budget and the overall impact to the town, and I commend him for that. But it was the right thing to do to get two. So, I don't want to take the apprehension to ask for staff as a signal that it isn't needed either, because it, I mean, based on the information we've gotten, all the studies and everything else, it sounds like there's a need. And again, I don't want to sit here and pit plow drivers against social services. I want to have both, if that's what this town needs. But I guess we should each ask ourselves, is the social services individual a high enough priority that we're willing to talk about not as many trees being cut, or not as many sidewalks being done, or not as many catch bases being done? And if we're not, then it comes out. And if we are, then, not picking on Tom Roy, but you got the biggest, you got a big budget. We bought Jerry half a truck. It's your turn. You know, it's, again, not suggesting that catch bases or roads are nicest to have, but again, it's, if we're going to help somebody and make a difference in their life, I think we're all willing to wait a year to do a couple more catch bases, you know? Again, it's a matter of priorities, right? So, for me, the social services individual appears to be a high enough priority that it stays in. And again, I'm willing to take the case, and I know it's Eric and Maria's budget to take to the Board of Finance, but I'm willing to go in and say, this is in our best estimation what we should be spending our money on, this is what we got elected to do. If they disagree with us from a purely percentage standpoint, so be it. Then we come back, we have another meeting, we have a discussion, and we do the priority list.
So, here's two thoughts I have. For me personally, the additional person in social services is a priority. I would be willing to consider going for not three-quarters of a person, but three-quarters of a year with that person, so they wouldn't start until the second quarter, which would reduce that by about $20,000, $25,000, because we'd only have them in there. It will impact our budget more dramatically next year. The other thought I have, and Sean, I don't know if you have any inkling as to how our budget is trending now. I realize, in Tom's case, you know, next Tuesday may be, goodness knows, because there's this bad word that was used, called snow. But if we're going to have a surplus, then we can be, use those dollars to fund some other stuff. And I know that's kind of risky, but I don't know how we're trending.
Yeah, we spent it yourself. Okay. Also, some staff changes and costs of different things associated with staff changes, we've certainly feeling pressures in the full-time lineups, and then obviously, unfortunately, in the middle of March, we're still monitoring the snow budget and providing updates, you know, instructions.
Well, I just, I'm trying to look under every rock and make sure that we're not missing something. But that's where I am. And I am also willing to be a silent majority at the Board of Finance meeting request.
Just, as liaison to the Board of Finance, I do know that they do not like it when we come in with the whole half or quarter position thing. That has traditionally not gone over well with them. We can certainly say it's going to be an incremental increase, but they like to see the whole number and have this, I mean, again, you're right, we're not going to hire this person on July 1st. So, there is some budgetary savings there, but I think we need to disclose to them, this is what the annual cost is. If they're comfortable taking that number down, because the hiring's not going to happen until September or October, okay.
Well, I think you said, this year, Eno is going to be under construction until September. So, you can say, the department is going to be in somewhat of disarray, probably for the entire summer. And that is going to affect their ability to hire and train a new person anyway. So, I think if you want to sell that to the Board of Finance, you can say, look, we've got construction going on in their offices, and we're not going to be able to do that.
Good point.
And if I was on the Board of Finance, I would say, well, it sounds like you can wait till next year. I mean, you know, it's...
How effective can that person be?
It's a slippery slope, right? But I, I mean, I agree with you.
We can't wait, because after the school's time, I could make all sorts of arguments for you here, but it is a priority for me.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, Maria?
So, since CNR came up, Sean prepared for us an update, as was requested at the Budget Workshop, on what's, what would be funded essentially with CNR, and then the smaller projects that we moved to CNR that would be funded with cash to capital. So, we'll just pass that out in case folks had a question. And to the point that Sean made, so my understanding of sort of the Board of Finance guidance is that capital and debt service has not been included in that guidance number that they provide. So, while you may ultimately say reduce something out of capital or CNR, and that would have an impact, true, on the overall increase, that that 1.75 number that they're looking for from us does not include the projects on this list, that they've traditionally viewed those as separate items. Am I correct on that, Sean?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Especially because the cash for capital has sort of been generated out of the debt service line. That has always been approved as a separate budget line, just like, as the floor appropriations for the operating fund. As Maria said, what you have before you is just a very slightly modified list of the CNR projects. Again, just to be exact, and to be back to that familiar $416, $250 for no increase up or down, I recommend, again, this very slight $500 adjustment to two projects up there in CNR, and a corresponding $1,000 decrease in that partial appropriation for revow for four years from now. I think this is reasonable, it minimizes the confusion over whether CNR is being different from prior years. This would be the exact same CNR appropriation that we've done for the last few years. And then you have in a separate section below, the proposed new projects to be funded through CNR, but via a cash for capital transfer. And again, all of the above are outside of that 1.75% or are operating budget. So, the overall impact doesn't change, but I just wanted to, if you would approve the list, I'd want to make sure that this is the list you wrote.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Any questions about this? I did want to go back to one thing in the analysis, which is the hazardous waste collection. To me, that was the only item that I would potentially be interested in talking about. And I did just a little bit of math, and I guess one area that gave me pause is that we serve 600 people, and it was $28,000, which comes out to about $46, $47 a person. And when I thought about it that way, it seemed, it seemed a little high, but I know it's something, it's a really nice service that we have and something I've used. So, I just wanted to have some discussion around that, just to make sure we do our due diligence on that item.
But there, I mean, so, the, Tom, this morning, there was, at the Public Safety meeting, are there other organizations that we can tap into that take hazardous materials?
There are a number of organizations that take a number of materials that are frequently brought to the Household Hazardous Waste Collection. There is not another one-stop shopping for any...
Wait, the lounge business.
There's, there's a lot of places that we were talking about this morning. There's places to dispose of batteries, paint, electronics, there's other places to do paper shredding. Where we get into the problem is when somebody has that chemical in their basement in a jar that's unidentified. When somebody has a couple of, or a half a pallet of fertilizer sitting in the back of their garage, or even worse, pool chemicals. There's really no good place to take pool chemicals, other than something like this Household Hazardous Waste Collection. And it's a good example of a material that a lot of people may have in their homes or in the back of their garage that could become very hazardous, not just to themselves, but to the community. You know, over time, there've been a lot of programs like Paint Care, that now takes all of your latex paint, your oil-based paints for free. But, you know, a lot of times, in my office, we receive calls from people, especially people who are moving, people who've had elderly parents pass away or move out. What do we do with this stuff? And there are certain chemicals, there's no easy answer for.
So I'm very prejudiced on this particular issue. I know, shocking. I know where that stuff, when they need to get rid of it, is going to go. And it's going to go into this lovely green barrel that has my name on it, for the most part. I, I think it is a relatively inexpensive price to pay. The price has come down over the past five years by sharing that cost with the other town. And having, what I think is a far bigger benefit to the town, is having three events a year. Because what ends up happening is when people go to move, they have to literally empty their house. The, which shocked me, that people didn't want that little bit of paint to touch up when they move in. But now it can't be there. It has to be gone. And you have to have somewhere to take it. This town probably generates at least two Gaylords, which is pretty close to a cubic yard of paint every month. And sometimes in the summer, yeah, it's staggering how much paint is gotten rid of.
That Gaylord thing, that's impressive.
Yeah. And, and to, so that material's already coming out, which is a very good thing. The, the chemicals that people don't know, years ago, when they first started doing these, we had people show up, they didn't know what it was. One person showed up with a masonry jar, half full of mercury. And it was just like, oh my God. And it was just in the back of the car, way more casual than I would have been driving around with that. But if you don't give people a place to put stuff, it will find a home, and it will not be a good thing. So while it, it looks like that's a, an easy number to ticket, you know, divide that by the three pickups, it's not that expensive for the value that you get. Because the reality is, not all of it, but some of it will, will find a home in a barrel. Some of it will find a back road. And very honestly, those back roads are in the tobacco fields, the town forests, the parks, and that is what some people will do. And it's disappointing, but we need to be prepared for that.
Thanks, Mike.
Sean? I could just put out from the financial side of it, you're right, it's $46 a person. The contribution to the visitor center is $75 per, based on the usage statistics that we were given, so. I mean, I don't know if one's good or the other, but, you know, when we start breaking it down by usage of person, it's, these numbers are all over the place, so.
That's fair.
So I feel like, I feel like I somewhat opened this can of worms the other day with this conversation around social services. So, and, and you know, and being new to the process, if this is something that, that we, we can't find a solution for through the Board of Finance, is this, could we set up, set ourselves on a path that this is an absolute for us for next year? That we don't take anything other than this, this, the consideration for this? Chris, can you speak to that at all?
Well, I don't think we can commit a decision for next year.
But I mean, make it, make it a priority for us and them to work collaboratively together to understand this is something that we really need help to find in...
I, I was envisioning the way the conversation was going is, we would be within several budgets of approving that position, if not this year. But, again, I don't think we can commit ourselves to what we would vote for, for the next budget, but...
And to not commit, I'll take that back, commit, but so, because I feel like this is something that, again, we, we learn about this through, through collaborative, ongoing information discussions from our experts and our constituents. And it, and it's, and then we bring this to them, and it's something that's brand new. It's not something that's ever been spoken to or consulted on prior, in, as they, as they create their budget. So with that mindset, is this then something that, from past experience, once you start that conversation, then they find a way to get you collaboratively, to get you to where you want to be with the services and, that you potentially want to offer?
Talking about the Board of Finance?
Yes, correct.
Yes, I think they work collaboratively with the other boards. I do think they look at where a board is coming in relative to their guidance, and want to see what they, you know, feel is a good faith effort and due diligence towards meeting that. So I always have particular concerns the further away from that guideline that we are.
Sure, I understand that, I respect that.
So that's why I was comfortable with what seemed to be a conversation that we would be heading towards, fulfilling that need in the future. But it wasn't within the context of this budget, our highest priority for, for this year. I don't dispute, again, I don't, it's justifiable. There's a justifiable argument for it. It's just not the argument I want to make this year.
Thank you.
I would have to disagree. I, I think you and I saw last night that we had to go get extra chairs. There were so many people who wanted to come in and find out about vaping. And those were parents and teachers and, you know, kids in our community who needed to see that, needed to learn about it. And it keeps our kids safe, it keeps our young adults safe, and it educates our community about the problems that are, that are already here. We have listened to the police department talk about how much Narcan they're using. I think you were very nice to volunteer last night to do the camera, but when you were out of the room, we decided to do a Narcan training for the citizens of the town, and actually offer Narcan kits for sale, because there is such a need. There are, we're going to do more suicide prevention training. I mean, we just had a very tragic suicide of a young person last week. And we have, you know, people calling all the time. I mean, the need is real, and it's here, and I, I can't justify waiting a year for that. I'm sorry, I just...
Yeah, I agree with Cheryl on that. So we got to this conversation because Maria had asked us for guidance on sort of what are the buckets that we would pull from if we were looking to reduce the budget? And we had said that cutting services was the bucket that we wanted to look at. I always want to make sure in doing our due diligence, Maria, are there other, other areas that we're not considering that you'd want to bring to our attention?
So I think, to go any further beyond the service enhancements that were made over the last three years, again, we'd really be looking at your core services. So again, that would, we would really have to look at what other core services we didn't mention in the memo, that you might have a tolerance for having some level of reduction. You know, for our discretionary programs, most of those, things are truly discretionary. So items that, you know, we're not required to provide by federal law, state law, charter, ordinance, contracts that we've entered into are pretty far and few between, and those tend to be programs that are of a much, much smaller dollar amount, and they're just likely not to add up to that, that large number that you're looking for. But again, if there are service areas you'd be interested in us further analyzing or looking at that we didn't mention or present in the memo, we could certainly continue to, to analyze some service reductions for you.
I don't think I'm, I'm prepared to ask for that right now. I just wanted to see if there was anything immediate that we weren't considering. Thank you. So at this point, I wanted to get the group's perspective on, are we prepared to support this budget and send this budget to the Board of Finance?
Can you define which budget you're talking about here?
The 4.36%, so including all of the items on the left-hand side.
I am. I think we make the case, and if we make it a compelling argument as we can, and we work with the Board of Finance as we have in the past, if their opinion differs from ours on the percentage. But I think they need to hear the case for the 436, because to me, it's compelling enough to make it for them. And I'm not worried about whether it's 436 or 389 with them. I think we make the case, and then we do as we've done in the past. If there's a disagreement on the percentage, then so be it, and we come back and we have that conversation. I think we, you know, we know what it looks like, to some extent, of what, what the number would be, but, you know, we're trying to, to somewhat extent, you know, peer into a crystal ball, is it going to be 389 that they're going to tolerate? Is it 36 they're going to tolerate? Is it 32? And, and Chris, you know, your wisdom is right. It's probably somewhere in that range. But candidly, I would, and I don't know if everyone else would appreciate, if, if this to me is our priorities at this point, if they're going to disagree, I need to spend some more time where this falls within the overall priorities. And I'm serious about looking at roads and trees and other things. I'm not prepared to do that tonight. So that's why I think we, we make this case today. And if, again, they want a point from us, then we sit down and we make a smart decision on where that point comes from. Again, I don't think this is an embarrassing number. I, I can defend this in Fitzgeralds, I can defend this at the gas station. Like, you know, if any resident wants to talk to me about this, I can, I can stand up and stand behind this.
To that point, Sean, I think that you, we will be defending this if we keep this budget, and we'll be defending it if we cut this budget. And I feel better defending this budget than the cuts. I would agree.
I'm, I'm not afraid of defending a budget that would address the table of drug paraphernalia that was removed from the high school that we saw last night. I just, I think that a lot of people don't really grasp the immediacy of the, the problem. And I know all of us do, because we, we hear it, you know, we, we work with this, and we work with our wonderful staff who see it every day. But I, I would be comfortable defending that. I don't feel this is extravagant.
So for me, Eric, I, I could possibly support the initial submission amount from Maria, but I'm not going to support the additional amount. So I would not vote for the, the total budget as it stands right there, so.
Okay.
But obviously, there's a consensus here to do so. And again, that's not a statement that it can't be justified, it absolutely can be. It's just where ideally, where I would like to present the budget, so.
Sure. Appreciate that.
I appreciate you saying that, Chris, I really do.
Yeah. Chris P., is there anything you'd like to add?
We're good.
Okay. So at this point, is there a formal set of motions?
Yes.
They're being printed right now, I think.
Is there being sent to the prayer?
Thank you.
Can you break the three edits?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that, thanks.
The fun job.
Yeah, so...
But that's in capital. Oh, yeah.
You know, you can't just say, well, they're...
What about the credit card?
Okay, let's call this meeting back to order, and Sean, Askin has graciously agreed to read the, read the motions. Sean, were you going to offer some context in front of these?
Sure, yeah, so we're basically on board. Basically, the first motion you have seen there, the blank there for the main motion, but is the total appropriation being requested is the 20,982,401. That is the town manager's recommended budget, plus the additions listed below, and the three deductions below that as well. Farther down, we have the Water Pollution Control Operating Budget, which includes the Avon and Granby Clean Water Fund share, just so we have the total full appropriation as that comes in as revenue, as we discussed on Saturday. Residential rental properties, $36,423. And again, just down the line, these are each of the separate appropriations that we make. We have the recommendation for the debt service and cash for capital appropriation. There is the $6,179,600. Again, that includes both principal interest payments and the cash, as we've been discussing it, including that portion that will be funding into the CNR fund. We also have the appropriations out of the CNR fund totaling $747,750. That will include the standard CNR of 416,250, the additional 176,500, as discussed before, out of the cash for capital, and then the 155 even appropriation for the LoSiP grant program for road vaping. And then we get into the Capital Improvement Plan. Those are the items listed. Again, the only one that is different from what was in your books was the irrigation study that, as we said, was reduced and then moved into CNR. And then, oh, sorry, I should say, the first section there, 803B, is the charter section that says any items that were not included in the prior, in the ensuing year, last year, so in, in Fiscal '19's column for last year, have to be approved by a vote of at least four members. So you need to just endorse that these are new items to this year's capital plan in the upcoming year. Any questions on that one? And then finally, the full motion to approve the Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal '19, and the recommended funding of such. And then finally, a referral to the Planning Commission of all the projects on the Capital Improvement Plan. Recognizing that technically, they probably won't take up the consideration of the dump truck, but we've historically just referred the entire plan, and then they take up those items that they need necessary. It's just a high level of...
Thank you. Sean, do you want to take it away?
Sure. So with that, I make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen 2018, 2019 operating budget in the amount of $20,982,401, to include the following changes from the town manager's proposed budget. An $8,000 increase for the youth services line item, which is a correction. A $1,400 increase for the police collective bargaining education stipend, which was a correction. A $60,000 increase for an addition of a social services MSW employee. $18,000 increase for an addition of a social services MSW employee benefits. $5,825 increase for an addition of the licensure funding for the Social Services Director. $5,000 increase for the Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center. A $1,000 decrease for the Social Services Public Agency Support, and that's a correction. A $1,400 decrease for the police uniform allowance, which is a correction. And a $1,285 decrease for the probate court, which was an updated budget request.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, and the motion passes five to one.
So I make a motion to approve the Water Pollution Control 2018, 2019 operating budget in the amount of $3,594,463, which includes the Avon and Granby share.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I make a motion to approve the residential rental properties for 2018, 2019 operating budget in the amount of $36,423.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Mike seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I make a motion to approve the Sims Farm Special Revenue Fund, 2018, 2019 operating budget in the amount of $1,981,983.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I make a motion to approve the debt service and cash for capital appropriation for the 2018, 2019 operating budget in the amount of $6,179,600.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the motion passes unanimously.
I make a motion to approve the Capital and Non-Reoccurring Fund, 2018, 2019 operating budget in the amount of $747,750, including $416,250 appropriated by the, to be funded by the Capital and Non-Reoccurring Fund, $176,500 appropriated to be funded by a one-time cash for capital transfer, and $155,000, which is appropriated to be funded by the state's local capital improvement LoSiP grant program.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
I make a motion to add the following... I make a motion to add the following new projects to the, to the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2018-2019 in accordance with the Charter Section 803B, the multi-use Town of Simmsbury/Bloomfield for $1,020,000, the ash-borer tree mitigation for $110,000, the Department of Public Works dump truck for $180,000, school facilities master plan slash reconfiguration study for $200,000, the school securities improvements for $850,000, the terephile sewer rehabilitation for $100,000, the primary clarifier rehabilitation for $75,000, the plant water system rehabilitation for $80,000, and the 1999 jet flusher truck replacement for $175,000.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
I now make a motion to approve the Capital Improvement Program to include the following projects in fiscal year 2018, fiscal year 2019. Greenway improvements for $300,000, recommended funding cash, multi-use trail Town of Simmsbury/Bloomfield, $1,020,000 recommended funding grants, highway pavement management, $850,000 recommended funding cash, sidewalk, sidewalk resurfacing, $300,000 cash, ash-borer tree mitigation, $110,000 cash, Department of Public Works dump truck, $180,000 cash, terephile sewer rehabilitation, $100,000, the sewer use fund, primary clarifier rehabilitation, $75,000 sewer use fund, plant water system rehabilitation, $80,000 sewer use fund, 199, excuse me, 1999 jet flusher truck replacement, $175,000 sewer use fund, the schools facilities master planning and reconfiguration study for $200,000 cash, district network infrastructure, $400,000 bonds, the Henry James Middle School renovation Phase III LMC STEM focus and auditorium, $23,965,620 bonds, 15-year, the boiler replacement Latimer Lane, $900,000 bonds, the school security improvements, $850,000 bonds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously.
I make a final motion to refer the capital projects to the Planning Commission in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 168-24, the Greenway improvements, multi-use trail Town of Simmsbury/Bloomfield, highway pavement management, sidewalk resurfacing, ash-borer tree mitigation, Department of Public Works dump truck, terephile sewer rehabilitation, primary clarifier rehabilitation, plant water system rehabilitation, 1999 jet flusher truck replacement, the school master, excuse me, the school facilities master planning and reconfiguration study, the district network infrastructure, the Henry James renovation Phase III LMC STEM focus and auditorium, the boiler replacement Latimer Lane, and the school security improvements.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Sean, thank you for reading those.
Thank you. Congratulations, everybody, you spent more money than we ever have in our law lives.
I just wanted to thank the board for all of their time in this process, Saturdays and evenings, and your thoughts and your collaboration, and look forward to bringing this in front of the Board of Finance. Next step is on February, February, March 28th. And I've asked Sean to tag-team that presentation with me and graciously agreed, so I appreciate that. Anything else?
Nothing I'd rather do.
I know, looking forward to it.
Should be great.
Any, anything else from any other board members before we adjourn? Hey, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We shut this.